Welcome.
Good evening and welcome to the City Council Forum for the City of Independence. I am Ann Calvert, President of the League Women Voters of Kansas City, Jackson, Clay, and Platte Counties. The League is one hundred one years old and still going strong throughout the country. We were founded in nineteen twenty by suffragists, the year women earned the right to vote in the United States. We are organized at the local, state, and national level, and our membership is open to all men and women in voting age. We're nonpartisan, meaning we do not support candidates or parties, but we do take positions on issues and policy after careful study and after consensus. In addition to sponsoring and moderating forums like tonight's forum, the League is well-known for providing voter services all over the country, from voter registration to written voter guides in major election years, to our national website, vote four one one dot org, which provides valuable resources for information on candidates, issues, and voter registration. You can even type in your address and it will tell you exactly what's on the ballot for you, where you live. Tonight's forum is co-sponsored by Walnut Gardens Community of Christ. So please allow me to introduce Pastor Ken McLaughlin from the Walnut Gardens Community of Christ.
Thank you, Ann. On behalf of the people of the congregation, and specifically the community engagement team at Walnut Gardens Community of Christ, we are delighted to be able to co-sponsor this particular event in the City of Independence. To give a broader perspective of what we're doing tonight, I'd like to read a very brief piece from Jessica Wehrman, who is a Legislative Affairs Journalist based in New York City. And she had an experience while she was covering a presidential election, excuse me, a presidential inauguration. She found herself all alone in the U.S. Capitol Rotunda, I quote. "I realized then that the rotunda was so very quiet, all alone that morning. I walked over to the very center of the room where Abraham Lincoln and John F. Kennedy's caskets once lie in state, and the history and the symbolism suddenly felt so powerful to me that it could have brought me to my knees. I felt that morning like the rotunda was a cathedral, something holy, and for a few brief moments, I had all that sacredness to myself. Beautiful place, that symbol of something that was so much bigger than any one person or any one politician could ever be. I felt like a speck in democracy, in this long, messy story that our country tells. But you know, being a speck was so much better than not being a part of this beautiful experiment at all," end quote. So ladies and gentlemen, we meet this evening as tiny specks in the democratic process. We participate as citizens in this beautiful experiment that we still call the United States of America. Welcome, and let's get started. Ann?
Thank you so much for those words. Thank you. We want to thank also the participants for this forum. Thank you to the candidates. Thank you to Mr. Fox, our moderator. Thank you to the people behind the scenes who are helping us livestream on Facebook, as you all got to see us almost struggle with, and our timer and our behind-the-scenes tech person. So I want to thank Elizabeth Dar, our timer, and Carl Bettis, our tech host, and also our question wranglers, Anitra and Charles Steele. If you would like to submit a question, you still can. Please email LWVKCforums@gmail.com. It's the email that's on the screen there. And before I sign off to watch the forum on Facebook, so that you don't have to see my blank screen, and I know Pastor McLaughlin is signing off as well to watch on Facebook, I would like to welcome our moderator for this evening, Jeff Fox, editor of the Examiner. Thank you, Fox. Mr. Fox?
Thank you. I'm coming to you tonight from the offices of the Examiner. I should get a plug in. We are one hundred and twenty-four years old and have been the voice of Eastern Jackson County for that whole time. An election on April fifth in Independence, Missouri, as there are many places. There are four names on the ballot that day, four people running for two at-large positions on the Independent City Council. Those four people are Karen DeLucy, who's an incumbent, incumbent Mike Huff, former council member Marcy Gregg, and Jared Fears. Karen DeLucy is unable to join us this evening due to some health issues, but the other three candidates are with us. One quick technical thing, I'm going to try to remember to mute for the sake of sound quality after I ask a question and jump back in and out, but I cannot promise you I'll be perfect about that every single time. But let's get to it. The first question will go first to Mike Huff and then to Marcy Gregg, and then after that to Jared Fears. The first question is this. What compelled you to run for the City Council and what do you bring to the table that would make a difference on that body? Mike Huff.
Yes, I'm running this time for transparency and gaining trust of our citizens. Last four years have been challenging. What I bring to the table is that I was an employee here for thirty-five years, I know the system, know how it works, and trying to make a difference.
Marcy Gregg?
Thank you, Jeff. As you mentioned earlier, I served previously on the City Council from two thousand six to two thousand sixteen as the District One Councilmember. I took some time off when my husband passed from cancer and I stayed home and took care of my boys who were still at home with me, but never strayed far from having an ear to the ground of city issues and being concerned about things happening in our community. I have watched with great interest in the last few years and sometimes with dismay at a lack of civility and a lack of ability for this council to function cohesively together for a common purpose. And I think that, coming back to the council, I would bring back with me the skills, the experience, the passion, and the integrity that I shared with this city before. I look forward to being able to do that, to build on the successes that we had in the past. We enjoyed many successes in the First District and several large community projects, such as the building of the arena, building of an inclusive playground in Independence, doing a lot of things to correct bad zoning and further housing development opportunities. And so I'd just like to be able to bring those skills that are still with me back to the community and to offer them up in service. I was raised to always be mindful of giving to community, and I've spent most of my adult life volunteering in Independence in some way, shape, or form. So that's why I would hope to be reelected and be able to serve again.
Jared Fears?
Thank you, Jeff. Before I start, I do want to let those that are participating tonight know that my family's in the midst of kind of a family crisis emergency with a health situation with my daughter and either already born or soon to be born, very premature granddaughter. And so I just would ask maybe, number one, we're a family of faith, I'd ask an interest in your prayers. But number two, if I'm not a hundred percent tonight, know that that's the reason why. To answer your question about why I'm running, I've thought about running for council since I worked for the city almost, well, almost thirty years ago now. I worked, you know, in the finance department. I got a master's degree in public administration at that time, and also, you know, have been involved in a number of city activities and on a city committee in the last few years. You know, I think what you asked about qualifications and things, what I would tell you is I've been walking door to door for quite a while, and I visited with a gentleman yesterday that basically said, you know, you have the full package. And he says, I'm a scout leader, you're a scout leader, you have a full package of competency, and I'm supporting you, and that's, and so that's why I think I have qualifications.
All right, thank you. This next question will go first to Marcy Gregg and then Jared Fears and then Mike. So Marcy first, here's the question. The North Point Development goes to, which is in the Little Blue Valley, proposed for the Little Blue Valley. It goes to the Planning Commission next Tuesday. It would mean development, it would mean jobs, and it would mean traffic. What questions do you need answers to before making a decision on North Point?
Thank you, Jeff. I'm really excited about the possibility of the North Point Development. There are still some questions, obviously, left unanswered, but I will say this, with regard specifically to traffic, we built the Little Blue Parkway with this kind of development specifically in mind. And many years ago, I think probably in the neighborhood of twenty years ago, we also created a Little Blue Valley Development Plan, which again, took into consideration what traffic flows and what other development needs would have to happen in the valley to accommodate this kind of industrial development. I've been up to the northland, visit the North Point Development up there and also down on I forty-nine to see a similar development, and I'm very excited about the quality of the product. Some of the other questions I have would be, will they ensure that the construction jobs that are brought in will be brought in with prevailing wages and that those employees that come and do the construction work of the project itself will be offered the best compensation and that they're not, you know, cutting back on labor? I'd also like to know what the environmental impacts will be. Some of that area is in floodplain, but it's also currently in fields and in undeveloped land. And I know that from past experience with development, there are many ways to mitigate floodplain issues. The trails appear to be protected in this development, but that's also something I would want to make sure that we take care of and ensure.
Jared Fears?
Jeff, thanks. I think North Point is really a great opportunity, it looks like, from at least the outset, that it's a great opportunity for the city. It's an opportunity that, you know, I'm concerned about that if we let it pass, we may never see again as a city. The question is, but that said, so I do have tentative support for the project. I do have a number of questions, traffic being a primary one. Not so concerned about Little Blue Parkway itself. I am more concerned about the interchange of I seventy and Little Blue Parkway and the amount of traffic that may be added to that interchange and what will need to be done so that we... It's already, you know, I was actually out in Remington the other day walking door to door, and I was talking to a gentleman out there, and his concern is, he says, you know, what's going to happen at that intersection of I seventy and Nolan Road, I mean, I mean, Little Blue Parkway, sorry. I seventy, Little Blue Parkway, what needs to happen? It's already congested. What needs to happen? And that's really the primary question that I have from a traffic perspective. I do have another number of questions regarding the development itself and the kinds of businesses that will be going in there, and a little bit more information about the electric needs for those. I think all that will be helpful information. But in general, I have tentative support for it.
And Mike Huff?
Yes, I've been to quite a few of the meetings down there at the school and down there in the valley with the people down there. Also had a couple meet and greets with them people, went to quite a few houses and talked to the folks down there. You know, I think it's a great project, but my opinion doesn't weigh what the people around here, you know, I put in for them to tell me what they want, what my opinion is. I've heard quite a bit, at this point, I've heard a lot of people against it down in the valley, and that's understandable. It does have a direct relationship to their property, and the traffic is definitely a concern and everything down there. But myself personally, you know, I think it's a great project, but once again, I put in here for the people, by the people. And so until I hear from everyone, I won't have a decision. I vote on that. Thank you.
This question will go to Jared Fears first, and then Mike Huff, and then Marcy Gregg. This is, and Charles and Anitra did a great job wrangling the questions, as was stated earlier. This is one of those submitted questions. "I live behind the Nolan Fashion Square shopping area. It is completely empty except for a small fitness gym, and it needs to be addressed. It's a haven for homeless, drug deals, animal rodent infestations. What would your plans be to revitalize this area and not a Section Eight, either demolish it or put something in there like a senior apartment complex?" That's a little bit of a question, a little bit of a statement, but I'm going to throw it to you, Jared.
Make sure I unmute here. Good question. That is an area of serious concern, I think, for the city. It has been vacant for some period of time and needs to be addressed. I think, you know, we need to do two things there. We need to do code compliance, if there are any code issues, and address those as we go along until we get those properties filled back in. In addition to that, I think we need to be working with the Independence Economic Development Council, the Chamber of Commerce, and other people to try to think about how we might reutilize those properties in different ways. Those are all retail properties. Perhaps they could be used in a different way. We need to kind of think outside the box about how those properties could be used and reused so that we get productive businesses in those facilities.
And Mike Huff?
Yes, of course, that's, I watch council meetings, that's been on my radar for a long, long time. I understand the blight out there. I think it's even been nailed as a blighted area by the city. But the biggest issue we have out there is getting a seller there that's motivated, and this particular person that owns that's not real, real motivated to sell. I have heard rumors of apartments and stuff like that, which I'm totally against. It's a very, a great corner for some kind of business other than apartments. We have enough of them. Had the housing study that kind of, we sat out. Definitely need to really work on that. Definitely a blighted area and terrible to come into our city and see that out there. I know that the city staff has been addressing it for quite a while. You know, it just takes a lot of documentation and everything else, but definitely agree, it's a blighted area.
And Marcy Gregg?
Sure. Well, that area seems to have been in decline even since the days when I was on the council before. We began to see neglect by the property owner. The property owner had even approached the city and floated ideas of some tax incentives to revitalize the area, but some of those early proposals included looking for incentives to do things that the owner really should have been taking care of all along. I think the first thing that the city needs to do is be mindful of any property maintenance code issues that are existing on the property. Make sure that the owner is held to feet to the fire, so to speak, to take care of those issues. I think Jared's suggestion of working with the chamber and the EDC is also the next step in hoping to attract some ideas for redevelopment of that area. But something else that I think that we would be remiss in not pursuing is a conversation with Kansas City. Kansas City property, or excuse me, city limits about that area. And sometimes those parts of our city get to be sort of a no man's land. We have issues with folks not knowing, for example, who to call when you have an emergency arise and so on. And there are property issues and development issues and so on that we share in common. So I think the first thing that I would do would be to encourage the city to go after any property maintenance issues, to begin to have conversations with the owner and the development authorities and the chamber, and then also, of course, to have a conversation with Kansas City about how we might partner.
Okay, we're back to the top of the order, so it's Mike, Marcy, Jared on this question. Mike Huff, this question goes first to you. It is a submitted question to the League. "Council members are elected to represent the citizens. They are required to attend council meetings and have a duty to participate in votes. Do you think it's appropriate to walk out during a meeting and refuse to vote?" Mike Huff?
Yes, I agree with that. I've been to every meeting, only missed one, and I don't recall seeing anybody ever walk out on a vote, but I know there's been quite a bit of stuff going on city up there. But I don't, I do definitely think that people need to work together. I come with open arms, always have, but I'm also up there to represent the citizens here, and I'm just... When I have questions thrown at me, then that's what I do, is I ask questions and ask the rest of the council what their thoughts are.
Marcy Gregg?
Well, absolutely. It's the responsibility of council members to attend every meeting possible by any means and to come prepared to those. That includes being extremely familiar with the charter, with the Unified Development Ordinance and other important independence documents that impact the ordinances that council members vote on. I think it's never appropriate to get up and walk out in a meeting, whether it's for a vote or just in simple defiance of the will of the rest of the council. I think that, I think when that happens, council members are silencing the voice of the people that they represent, and they're missing an opportunity to participate in collaboration and conversation. Beyond that, I think it's also a responsibility of council members to be meeting regularly with the city manager, to be discussing issues, to be thoughtful about the concerns that the entire community has and to be planning with the manager. And I think it's important for those council members to be visiting with each other, every one of them, including the mayor, outside of council meetings. There's nothing wrong with council members visiting with each other, so long as they don't approach a quorum. And frankly, that's how a lot of disagreements get worked out. You have conversations with each other, maybe have a cup of coffee or tea, whatever's your drink of choice. And I think there's not enough of that happening right now, so we need to encourage more collaboration, cooperation amongst the council members.
Jared Fears?
Well, Jeff, this is one of those times where it's unfortunate to be last in the list, because I could almost say ditto to what Marcy just said. Because I agree that, you know, it's important, really important, that council members attend meetings, that they show up prepared, that they have researched and asked opinions and listened to their constituents, all constituents, and then come prepared and to make decisions at the council meetings. I agree that it's never, never appropriate to walk out of a meeting. That's why we're, as a council member, that's why council members are hired, is to be there and be present. If you're not there, you can't be present and so, and make decisions. And so I think that's appropriate. I agree that it's appropriate to meet with the city manager regularly. That would be my intention, is to meet with him weekly whenever we're both in town. I don't travel very much, and so, and with the benefit of Zoom, I think you can pretty much participate, it looks like, from wherever you are. And so even if you are out of town, maybe you can set aside a little time on a Monday night to participate. So that would be my intent.
Okay, this question goes first to Marcy Gregg. "The city is negotiating to buy two refurbished gas-fired turbines to replace six substations and to continue to meet the city's energy production obligations to the Southwest Power Pool. That would commit the city to decades more of burning fossil fuels to make electricity. Is that the right way to go?" Marcy Gregg?
I'm a bit disappointed with the idea that we might be investing in almost seventy million dollars of debt in a technology that is clearly not green and is really even harmful to the environment. We do have an obligation to replace generation, and we need to find a way to do that, but I think we also need to find a way that's responsible. In a recent council meeting, the letter of intent was, is going to be forwarded, allowing us to pursue talking about this issue. I think that's really important. I think having the conversation and being able to explain to our constituents the merits of one type of technology over another when it comes to generation is critical. There was also the suggestion that this might be an issue that needs to be put before the voters so that they can have a voice in this kind of a commitment. This project would incur debt that our grandchildren and beyond will have to deal with, and it does so in a way that does not promote green energy and does not promote responsible care for our environment, in my opinion. There are a lot of experts out there who can give us better information about how to, you know, which different technologies to pursue. And if, you know, pursuing the letter of intent is the way to open the door to that conversation, then I favor that. But I have reservations about committing to this kind of technology for that amount of money.
Jared Fears?
So this is an important issue for the upcoming council, I believe, in a number of ways. You know, I'm, I share some concern about the use of natural gas turbines alone in this particular process. My understanding is, is we're in a situation where we're going to be needing to make a decision within a relatively, in the big picture, relatively short timeframe. It's unfortunate that we are in that situation, because I would like to, I would have liked to have been able to have more time to address other options other than just natural gas generators. That seems to be the most viable alternative. I'm wondering if it could be less than the two large turbines that are possibly going to be considered. The other thing I'm wondering is if there aren't other options that we consider at the same time. You know, one way to meet our objectives with the Southwest Power Pool is to reduce our power consumption. So if we find ways to reduce our power consumption, then that also helps us meet those same obligations. And there may be ways that we could do both and, both a generation as well as a reduction possibility.
And Mike Huff?
Yes, this is something that I've been saying for quite a long time. This should have been addressed twenty years ago. Most places in the power business have a twenty-five-year plan. These plant is, these particular pieces of equipment are over sixty years old. I'm kind of puzzled as to why we're buying something used and calling it better than new. I've never heard of such a thing. When I buy a car, I go buy a new car. I don't buy one that's used and say it's better than new. One of the other things, and I agree with that, there's alternative power sources out there. I've been mentioning for over three years about a plant called Dogwood, which already has its carbon footprint out there, so it's not adding anything to the air quality or anything else or anything like that, because it's already existing, it's already generating. So to buy into something like that, they're talking, this new plant being seven hundred, eight hundred dollars a megawatt hour, where we can go in here and buy it for about five hundred, maybe a little less than that, which saves the ratepayers twenty-six million dollars. It doesn't change the footprint of carbons. It's already there, it's already existing. It actually, you can sell the power that's already being generated out there. The General Fund would have over a million dollars a year annually. Power and Light would make tens of millions of dollars, and I've offered this many, many times, being shot down, so it's all happened.
This question goes first to Jared Fears. Parks and the arts are important to the quality of life in Independence. Where do they fit among your priorities? Have you done mute? That's you, Jared Fears, sir.
Yep, I got it. Okay, so, you know, parks and arts are important to have in the community. It is, you know, critical in my mind that we have parks and that we both fund the maintenance of those parks and improvements of those parks. You know, I was in the Rockwood area just the other day. Uh you know, I was in uh the Rockwood area just the other day, uh walking door to door. And talking with folks over there and they at least felt like they were promised a park out of the Rockwood. Um uh golf course when that was uh turned into a solar farm, that part of it was going to be solar and part of it would be a park. Well, they don't feel like that that has been um for that promise was fulfilled. And so um. You know, that's just an example of the kind of thing we need to look to do is to maintain those parks. Um I know that up at the Sermon Center, we have a the opportunity to have the the children's theater and some other theater there. Uh that's good. The the work that's being done at the Inglewood Arts District is is very positive, very good for our community. All that, um we just need to find ways to uh, you know, bless those opportunities and make them better.
Uh Mike Huff, Parks and Arts.
Yes, um very much into the parks. Um you know, we collect an extra tax here in the City of Independence for our parks. And um I'm always amazed that uh the quality of park we have is is terrible. Um grass grows high, get a lot of complaints about it, uh equipment not being taken care of. I realize it's a a major expense. We do have a lot of parks and I understand that. Um and a lot to maintain. Um but um you know, I think that when I go to other surrounding towns, they have many, many parks also. Uh Blue Springs, Lee Summit, their parks are very nice, nice kept grass and everything. Um I've complained about this quite a bit. Um as far as the Rockwood one, I'm totally against taking that uh. As a park temporarily. The solar panels should be removed and turned into a park temporarily until we find another avenue for that one. I realize that costs a lot of money, been criticized for that, but. And all in, it was just for a temporary situation uh would be a large, the largest park in Independence, but. That was only temporary until we figured out something good for that property over there to make everybody happy. Uh the solar farm is a bad deal over there. There's other places to put that twice as much power, half the size. And I will continue to fight for them people over there.
And Marcy Gregg.
Yeah. For those of us who've been around Independence a really long time or are old enough to be around a long time. Back in the nineties, we looked around at our city parks in in great dismay. Uh we had at that time, I think, forty-one park properties or so, give or take, and no dedicated funding source to to maintain those. And my husband and I and our family got uh intimately involved with the first efforts to create a a parks dedicated sales tax. Um back in, I believe, ninety-eight is when we passed that. And and then in subsequent ones to renew that. Um the parks are near and dear to our heart. We live just uh south of McCoy Park. And one of the hallmarks of um projects that I was able to accomplish when I served before. Was the building of the the first inclusive playground and special needs ball field here in Independence. We accomplished that through partnership with a nonprofit organization called Unlimited Play. I would like to see us pursue more partnerships with organizations like that and build another inclusive playground. The idea of that playground is not to build a park just for people who have special needs. But to build one so that kids and families with special needs can play alongside uh typically developing families and kids. So I'd like to see us pursue more partnerships with nonprofits, um with the area businesses and other arts councils. And to continue um developing parks, recreation, and the arts and and arts in the park. Particularly so that we have something to look at and enjoy when we play there.
Okay, this will be a question that goes to uh first to Mike Huff. It's a combination of a couple of submitted questions. Those questions are these. What are your plans to address the increasing homeless population uh issue in our community? And how will you collaborate with Kansas City? To address the homeless population that contributes to issues in areas where those two cities, our two cities, share a border. Mike Huff.
Yes, uh I've been addressing this for four years, uh put a lot of um ordinances together. Uh homelessness in the city is out of control, no doubt about it. It's um. It's a real tough one to deal with um as far as, you know, there they have. The biggest thing I've got with that is the trash uh that's left behind. It's not the lifestyle they choose. Um I know it's a very, very tough the thing to deal with. It's um but um. Continue efforts to change that have uh been in contact with Kansas City as well as the whole city has as far as city council and city staff. On the border things. I know there is a a letter of uh agreement or understanding with Kansas City. On a few of the bridges, the Twenty-four Truman, the one out at Lowe's that are not in the City of Independence, but. Uh the city staff, I know, is working with them to get an agreement or it's in the process of. That we take control of them and clean them up. I have noticed lately. A couple of them have been cleaned up. It looks like we're getting somewhere with them, but. It's a real uh real difficult spot. Uh we've got a lot of mental illness out there. We have a lot of drugs. Uh just a terrible sight that anybody in America has to live like that.
Marcy Gregg, homelessness.
Yes, thank you, Jeff. When I served previously, we had a coalition that met regularly in Independence monthly, uh called the Hungry and Homeless Coalition. Uh that was created by, or I should say organized by former council member Jim Schultz. And upon his leading the council, I took on that role of assisting with that. At that time, the city dedicated staff time to supporting that coalition of agencies. And interested stakeholders in dealing with the issues of hunger and homelessness in Independence. Since I left the council, uh the subsequent council chose not to continue to support that effort. And I think that's been a large mistake. Uh that group had agencies represented from all over Independence and and also Kansas City and Eastern Jackson County. And it allowed us to collaborate together about this common issue that we all share. The first thing that I would want to do when elected is to reconstitute something like that. It may need a new name, but there are a lot of agencies here in Independence already doing good work. Uh to try to do meet the needs of our our homeless folks and those who are in need of of uh food and of mental health services. And what they need is a a an effort by the city to support them and bring them back together as a coalition. To begin to take on those issues head-on and to ta- to tackle them. Uh but they can't do that swimming out there in the ocean by themselves. They need the support of the city and I I want to bring that coalition back.
Uh homelessness, Jared Fears.
Thanks for that, Jeff. Um so uh since the last, since the primary election, I've been walking literally every day. And in in neighborhoods uh from Fairmount to Country Meadows to Susquehanna. And in every se- there hasn't been a day go by that I someone hasn't brought up the issue of homelessness. So it is a serious issue. It's one that we need to address much better than what we're doing now. Um I'm reminded of uh of was in District One over on uh College Avenue. And um I I went to the door and talked with this family and they actually invited me in and we visited for a while. Um they're both uh um medical in the medical field. And the lady said, you know, she said, I I just want my daughter to be able to come home from school and not to have to worry about her. Um to be in, you know, walking down the street and and have um people that are maybe um. You know, not the kind of folks that she wants to her daughter to engage with. Having said that, you know, um we need to treat those folks in that situation with compassion. Because they um often either have mental issues or they have uh drug issues, some kinds of issues that they're facing. And uh or they're just in a bad way. So we need to treat them with compassion. And I agree with the idea of getting a coalition of people together, of experts in their field. To help us address these with with really good um suggestions to the council.
Okay, this next question goes first to Marcy Gregg and this questioner is giving us chapter and verse. So here we go. As baby boomers age and start looking at senior care with services such as independent living and assisted living and full care and memory care. They have to go to Lee's Summit or farther away. There are fifty-five and over apartments and villas, but they would require people to move again if they needed full care or memory care. But there's property on Thirty-Ninth Street and Little Blue Parkway and Arty Mize Road and Duncan Road. Pink Hill Road and other places where independents might join with Blue Springs and maybe others to create a facility. Similar to John Knox in Lee's Summit. People like to stay near the place, the city where they've lived for years. Would you support this? Marcy Gregg.
Oh, absolutely. As the uh the child of two aging parents, um my my parents are now seventy-six and eighty. Uh they're both living independently and at one in senior housing and. One that probably needs to be in some senior housing for extra supports. This is a subject that's near and dear to my heart. And as we uh as family have looked around for support services for them, we run into this problem. Uh there is no place where our folks could move into and then graduate through uh various levels of care as needed. Uh it's something that we entertained in the past before the council. Um when I served at. The area over where the old MCI Hospital used to be at one time, there was a proposal. To look at such a facility which would have graduated levels of care. Obviously, that developer didn't uh pursue that, but. If we can entice developers into those areas in in the Little Blue Valley or around that area where we could build such a facility, I'd be absolutely in favor of that. Um until that time. I've I've really been in favor of trying to find places that uh we can create within neighborhoods that we know our seniors are in so that they can continue to age in place. One of those success stories was the um the conversion of the Mount Washington School into senior housing. And also the Palmer Place uh is a senior housing, both of those in the district. Uh that I served before and those occurred during the time that I was serving as council member. So I'd love to pursue a project like that, absolutely.
Uh Jared Fears, you're up.
So Jeff, uh my mother lives in a uh assisted living facility here in Independence. Um and it is an independence. I I'm not sure if I completely understood the question correct, but. Sounded like that the the question, person asked the question didn't think that we have any of those kinds of facilities in Independence. And um and we do. We have a number of uh senior living facilities in Independence. Uh the Groves, for example, is a place that you can go and live uh independently or live in assisted living or live in. Um skilled nursing if if that was needed. Um. There are a number of other places that have different levels of care and uh throughout the city. Having said that, as we age, uh you're exactly right. We do need more of those kinds of facilities. We just need to make sure. That they are um in the proper places, that they are taken care of, that they come in. With the the appropriate kind of backing from a financial standpoint so that they don't come in, come and go. Uh they need to be uh facilities that stay around for a long time to provide a quality level of care to the those that stay in in their facilities.
And Mike Huff, the uh the John Knox question.
Yes, uh my mom and dad both live here in Independence. They're eighty-nine years old. They still are independent. Thank God to that and hopefully continue to be that way, but there is circumstances that come up and. Um we do, like Jared says, there is a few of them out here. Um actually, I've been uh working with a young man um. That's looking into building a couple of them here in the city. It's a matter of getting the zoning and uh that type of stuff uh going. There's traffic studies. There's. There's a lot to it than just throwing it out there. Uh we've been talking uh quite a bit, had quite a bit of uh. Dialogue on some of these empty buildings out here that might be able to um be able to handle that type of thing. Um but his uh biggest thing is they start off with a, you can downsize and as you move further back into the. Uh complex that it becomes uh where, you know, you have full full healthcare. So uh definitely uh for that and and definitely we need some more of them.
Uh this question goes first to Jared Fears. This is another submitted question. What measures? Have been done or what measures will be done to help with our uptick in neighborhood crime? Uh Jared Fears.
Well, there's another issue that um I've heard a lot about as I've gone door to door. Just a couple of days ago, I was over in Fairmont and I was talking with a fellow about um crime issues over there. Uh when I was out in Remington a while back and talking about the with a fellow out there about his um catalytic converter being cut off. Um and so, yeah, the the we need to um. In the police department, obviously, that's the place to handle that. We need to hire more police officers. We all know about that. We're uh now, I'm I'm assuming roughly thirty-four uh officers down because we just um. So hired four new officers just the other day or, you know, um equipped them and um but. Um in addition to that, we need to have more opportunity for neighborhoods to work together to try to. Reduce the crime in those neighborhoods. Um I remember long ago, a a program called Neighborhood. Uh Independence Plan for Neighborhood Councils and they did a lot of crime watching in the neighborhoods. I had folks that were around. You know, those kinds of things will help in those situations, but we do need to um better equip our police and get them out there. Uh so that we have really more of them to help in in this particular issue.
Uh Mike Huff, your thoughts?
Yes, uh definitely neighborhood crime is one of my top priorities, always has been. Uh or the problem is the lack of uh personnel. Second of all, this stuff works hand in hand. The blight, the homelessness and all this. Uh is a factor in uh these neighborhoods. I've put together myself personally Sycamore Hills to. Form a uh council down there, as Jared was speaking of. Um it's quite a large one. The lady started out with a lot of issues, took it upon herself. I think she's up to over three hundred houses now and she's trying to and get that whole neighborhood down. I think there's roughly five hundred and eighty. Uh worked with the ne- not another neighborhood over here, uh Carriage Hills. Uh actually took the young lady from Sycamore over there and introduced her, trying to uh get that rolling for them, you know, we um. Part of this whole deal is that we need to start taking back our neighborhoods. We need to know who our neighbors are. Or cars they drive. So, you know, we used to get to the point where everybody was, you know, your nosy neighbor, but we're back to that. Part uh in society where we have to take care of each other. We need to know what's going on, you know. If there's a moving truck next door, did they talk and say something to you about moving or uh different cars there? Um I always uh propose that when I go to these neighborhood meetings that you. Go up and down your street, across the street, introduce yourself, get to know your neighbors. Uh I think that's very important to uh get involved, so. It's my time.
And Marcy Gregg.
Yes, as Jared mentioned, you know, years ago, we had a very active uh system of neighborhood councils. At the same time, we also had block watch groups that were supported by the police department in the city. Uh sometimes those blended together. Um we don't have the level of supports i- in at that level of the the neighborhoods anymore like we used to. And I think um you you know, even in this day and age where we like to think that we are connected. So many different forms electronically, we are probably less connected to each other than ever before as a community. So I think i- it's important that we start to look at how to rebuild the fabric of those uh those organizations that supported the police department because. Police officers are called out to respond to crimes that have happened, right? We need to get to a point where we are proactive. We need to build a network of neighborhood councils again by, again, some of the name perhaps. But we need, we need to strengthen the ones that are existing, the ones that were trying to make an effort at doing that. And then we need to take those model examples and and transplant them elsewhere in the city and encourage more development. I think we also need to focus on working with our kids in schools. Uh I had conversations with the EDC and and with the chamber after Santa Calagon issues last year and. Talking about the issues of children and who become youth who become uh involved in petty crimes and so on. And I think that we're missing an opportunity to have conversations with kids and youth early on and to try to be more proactive and preventative. Uh of crime i- when it comes to those things that we can address with our youth.
This is a question that'll go first to Mike Huff and actually, Mike, it picks up on something that I believe you mentioned earlier this evening. It's a submitted question and it goes like this. What will you do to address blighted areas that greet people as they enter Independence at major entry points such as twenty-four and four thirty-five? And or I'm sorry, such as twenty-four and four thirty-five and also such as Truman Road and four thirty-five. Areas that have seen decline in business retention and up. Areas that have seen decline in business retention and upkeep. So what is the plan there? Mike Huff.
Once again, very, very important to me. I've always complained about the gateways of this city. We have officials, elected officials from all over, the governor and everything else. There's no real way to get into the city of Independence without going through these gateways. Since we're interconnected with Kansas City, we really don't know where the line, as you know, the guest coming in doesn't know where the line is. We've talked about putting signage up there so that they know they're entering Independence. Right now, we just have a little blue sign up there that they can hardly see. Definitely been working with Kansas City once again to try to clean these areas up. But I can't think of one entrance into the city that's, doesn't look terrible, terrible with the blight and everything. Just cleaning up these areas coming into the city would be great. Like I said, we're working on some signs. Working with Kansas City to clean up these areas and also even, you know, sweep behind our own door too. There's been a lot of efforts down on 24 to do that.
Marcy Gregg, your thoughts?
Yeah, first I'd like to give a shout out to council member Perkins who is, has been working hard on the 24 Highway Corridor. And recently we had, you know, news of some code enforcement that had happened along that corridor. That kind of cleanup effort comes on the heels of many years of planning for improvements in the area. And of course, what, what it comes down to is funding. Some projects have been able to be funded in partnership with MoDOT to, to create sort of an entryway there at the Truman Library. It's not an entryway to the city, but it certainly is an entryway to a key asset in our community. And I think we have an opportunity to work more with MoDOT, work more with Minn America Regional Council to take advantage of a lot of planning and a lot of transit opportunities that, that we started planning for years ago and have continued to try to support. But again, it comes down to funding. So one of the things that I'd like to see us do is, is make a more concerted and direct effort to work through Minn America Regional Council to secure funding to improve those areas. Both physically and infrastructure and also in terms of planning for redevelopment of the existing businesses that are there and cleaning the area up in general. We, we have sort of a struggle because we have a little bit of a no man's land in between Kansas City and Independence that, that makes it challenging. We have to work with both Independence and Kansas City and also the county to, to make that happen. That's challenging, but I'm confident that we can continue to do that if we make that a priority again.
Blighted entryways sincerely, Jared Fears.
Well, you know, that's been a concern for Independence for years and years. We've talked about that and heard about that for a long time. And, and I'm in agreement that they need our attention. They need be, we need to continue to do work on code enforcement. We heard, just this last Monday night, we heard a good presentation about proactive code enforcement. That was very good. I appreciated that a lot. And we probably need more of that frankly. But at the same time, we need to work with the communities around us and, and organizations like Minn America Regional Council to try to create opportunities for improving those areas. Maybe there's some more opportunity for community development, block grant money to be used in some of those areas. Lots of need relative to the entryways to our community. And we just need to do what we can from a code enforcement standpoint, but then also find ways because it all takes money. We know that. It takes money to improve those areas. And so we need to do what we can to help and provide some additional funding in those areas.
Okay. Candidates have been doing a great job of keeping their answers concise and to the point in under 90 seconds and that's good. We've covered a lot of ground. We could go all night. We're not going to do that. I'm going to ask one more question. It's going to go to Marcy Gregg first and then we'll come back with closing statements of two minutes each. This question goes, it's a submitted question, submitted to the league. It goes to Marcy first. What top three changes do you think that would most enhance the quality of life for Independence residents?
Okay, top three changes. First, a refocus on, on making our community, community safer. Community that isn't safe or doesn't feel safe impacts the quality of life for all of our residents and for our businesses. So we need to, we need to tackle head on the fact that we are understaffed in the police department. That we need to pull our community together as neighborhoods and into address crime and, and disorder issues. I think second then along with that goes an issue of simply reinstilling pride in our community. I'd like to bring back neighborhood cleanups that we did several years ago. We pursued grant funding at the time to make it work fiscally. But we had very large scale neighborhood cleanups where we brought in dumpsters. We went out proactively to meet with neighbors ahead of time, let them know what problem areas they had around their, their properties that needed to be addressed. And then we provided a, a place for them to bring their trash and yard refuse and so on and to improve the quality of life in their neighborhoods. That made a huge impact on our citizens and their, their attitudes toward community. Then I think third, we need to really find a way to address the needs of the homeless in our community. And it's not just about taking away their shopping carts and, and taking away their tent, you know, tents and so on. We need to get serious about dealing with the issues as to why they're homeless, how we can help them out of a hostile situation and how we can be compassionate in doing that.
Jared Fears, three ideas to improve quality of life.
Yeah, so I, I agree that we need to put more energy and more focus into police to be able to keep, help people keep safe. That really comes in to, we, we made a change in November with Proposition P. Provide some additional funding to police. I'm really hopeful that all of that will make a difference in allowing us to hire and equip and train more police officers. There's no doubt that that needs to happen. I, I was visiting with someone the other day that was just talking about the, the fact that our police don't even have time to do any traffic enforcement on, on streets because they just don't have enough manpower to do that. You know, we need to address the homeless situation. That will help on the, the help, like Marcy, Marcy said, help people keep safe, feel safe about their community and not be concerned about that piece of the puzzle. And so that is definitely something we need to do with a coalition of experts. And then, you know, might not surprise you that I think we need some change on the council to do that. You know, I've heard over and over as I've talked to houses that people want to trust their local leaders. And the fact of the matter is, is they don't right now. And so, so hopefully this change will allow that to happen and create trust among our citizens.
Mike Huff, quality of life.
Yes, I agree with the other two candidates here that public safety is our number one. The street crime is unreal. That would definitely change the way of living here or the, the Another thing to me is the blight. The blight contributes to all this. The houses that don't get tore down, it might've caught on fire, people living in them or the vacant houses definitely gets the crime going. About the places, the utility rates and also the quality of our streets. Our streets are terrible in this city. I've been complaining about it for three years. We have a streets tax. It's not spent properly. The potholes are big enough to swallow your car. I would just like to see, I grew up here my whole life. I would just like to see Independence return to a, a great place to live where when somebody says, where do you live? And I say, Independence, Missouri, that I don't have to defend where I live and I'm proud of where I live. I love Independence and I love the people in Independence and I hope that make Independence great again.
All right. And with that, we will go to closing statements. That'll go in this order. It'll be Jared Fears and then Mike Huff and then Marcy Gregg. Candidates have two minutes for their.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. And thank you to you and the legaling voters for making this opportunity available. You know, over the last few weeks, I've walked now to well over 1,500 homes. I've been able to visit with lots of people about their concerns regarding their neighborhoods and the city as a whole. The topic that comes up over and over is that they want to have confidence that their city leaders are doing what is best for them as citizens and not what benefits the leaders or special interest groups. They want leaders that make informed decisions that don't benefit themselves, specific groups or a select few. Anyone that knows me knows that I stand for integrity, honesty, openness and the ability to work with others to get the job done. I've been asked a number of times why, why I'm running for city council. And I've answered truthfully that I want to make Independence a better place to live, work and raise families. So for me, it's about public service with the key word being service. Service to my fellow citizens of Independence. I really think that it came home to me when I knocked on a door in the neighborhood that's up behind where the water department is. Back up behind where the milk jug used to be, for those that remember where that was, pretty close to Truman and Forest. I knocked on this door and told the lady who I was and why I was there. And she honestly could not believe that I was there. She said that she'd lived there for over 10 years and had never had anyone come to her home that was running for office. She was so excited that someone cared enough to come to her door and hear her concerns about her, her neighborhood. Ultimately, that is why I'm running for city council. For people like that lady that don't feel like they have a voice. I want to be that voice of honest leadership to the city. Thank you.
Jeff, you're not muted, but we can't hear you.
Mike, can you unmute? Go ahead.
Yes, I couldn't hear anything he was saying. Yes. What I'd like to say is on my closing statement is I can pledge to continue the efforts for city change to benefit independent citizens and to do the utmost transparency. I myself have introduced over 28 ordinances for the betterment of the citizens. Many to save the citizens' money through energy rate reductions and refunds. I've addressed blight, blight that has plagued our neighborhoods and business areas. I continue to address firefighters, police, the needs of these and new equipment. And finally, we need, you know, I would continue to address our economic development. Policies to create employment opportunities through workforce development and increase our community services. The one, the thing I wish to continue to is public safety, controlling utility costs, investing in energy strategies, workforce training, community services, government transparency. I look forward to serving Independence for another four years. We can have change for today and our future. And one last, last thought is, you know, this is independence for all, not independence for some. Thank you.
Ready for me? Okay. You know, I've lived in Independence my entire life and I've been privileged to be able to serve in a number of capacities. It's been a joy to be a part of the Planning Commission for 10 years, many years ago. To be a part of the city council for, for 10 years, also a number of years ago. And I, I was a part of those efforts to lead because I'm invested in this community for my family. I, I want this to be a place that my children can live and work and play in and raise their families. And I'm really excited that I have all of them here with me in Independence. So I have a vested interest in that, but I will tell you that that is as special an interest as it gets. I am probably the most independent voice of those who are running here. I'm not teamed up with any other candidates. I've been out visiting with, with neighbors, with home association leaders and with community members for, for the entire campaign and, and listening to them and hearing some of the same concerns that we had back when I served before and, and a lot of new ones. And the main concern that I hear is that we've lost ground in Independence, that we have a, a council that doesn't know how to talk to each other, that doesn't know how to communicate well with its city manager, that we have a lot of talent in this city, but we're not making the best use of it. And I would look forward to serving this community again to be a person who can speak to folks in, in all corners of our community and all corners of the dais at, at the city council meetings. One thing I think the citizens need to understand that there is a huge learning curve to serving on a city council. You'll spend the first six months, maybe a year or so, just getting an understanding of how things work in the city. I can hit the ground running because I've served before and I've stayed connected to the community. And I hope to bring back the integrity, integrity, the passion and the experience that I had and served with before.